So people out in the audience. All right, I think we can do this from here. Council stand in session. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Romero?
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kozakic?
Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Taylor Burgoyne from Eastside Covenant Church. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I'll use this mic. Oh, it's on. Perfect. I got a natural microphone. I'd be okay either way. What I have for us tonight is a blessing which is traditionally ascribed to St. Francis of Assisi. So please hear these words of challenge. May God bless us with discomfort at easy answers, half-truths, and superficial relationships, so that we may live deep within our hearts. May God bless us with anger at injustice, oppression, and exploitation of people, so that we may work for justice, freedom, and peace. May God bless us with tears to shed for those who suffer pain, rejection, hunger, and war, so that we may reach out our hands to comfort them and turn their pain to joy. And may God bless us with enough foolishness to believe that we can make a difference in the world, so that we can do what others claim cannot be done, to bring justice and kindness to all of God's children. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two C.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City manager's communication number 54 dated February 20th is received into and made part of the record. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none. We will go on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 40 dated February 20th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Romero.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. This weekend is the 37th Annual Tucson Peace Fair and Music Festival. As always, this event will have live music, entertainment, children's activities, and more. This is an opportunity for different community-focused organizations and social justice environmental groups to gather together and provide information to the community about how to get involved and build solidarity. This event is free and family-friendly. It will be this Saturday, February 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Armory Park located at 220 South Fifth Avenue. For more information, please call 520-468-5802. Also, please save the date. The Arizona Cesar Chavez Holiday Coalition is putting together this year's Cesar Chavez March and Rally. This year, the Coalition is adding a new component, a bike ride in addition to the march and rally. Bikers will meet at Cesar Chavez Park near Five Points and bike down to Sixth Avenue where they will meet marchers and the group will kick off together until they arrive at Rudy Garcia Park for a celebration that will include vendors, music, performances, and more. This is a free, family-friendly event to honor an Arizona leader and founder of the United Farm Workers Union. More details coming soon. The Cesar Chavez Holiday Coalition is always looking for new members. Meetings are held at 6:00 p.m. every Thursday at the Ward One Council Office. So the Chavez March will be Saturday, March 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Bikers will meet at Cesar Chavez Park at Five Points and marchers will meet at Hollinger K-8 School and then walk over to the rally which is over at Rudy Garcia Park. That's Saturday, March 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham?
Your Honor, a couple of things. First of all, I want to welcome back the Mobile Mini Cup to Tucson. The Mobile Mini Sun Cup started out of this body here in Tucson in 2011. And it started off as a one-off soccer game at High Corbett Field when the Wildcats weren't even there yet. And it's grown into, there are 11 teams this year. We are the largest spring training hub in the United States for Major League Soccer, making their sixth appearance, which is pretty terrific. Real, excuse me. There are six, yeah, there are six appearances. The New York Red Bulls, Sporting Kansas City, and Real Salt Lake have all returned to Tucson for the sixth consecutive time, which is absolutely terrific. The Red Bulls and Sporting Kansas City have been here every single year since the inception of the cup. This week, the teams will be squaring off into, at Keno Stadium. There's a game at 6:00 on February 20th, a game at noon on February 23rd, and a game at 5:00 p.m. on February 23rd. And that's a really big and exciting event for Tucson. The second thing I wanted to talk to tonight is, I wanted to extend, I wanted to extend a best wishes and a speedy recovery to Coach O, who had a stroke this week and it's minor and he's going to be okay, but he's a really integral part of what this community is for the last 30 years. And for all of us, a lot of us have a Coach O story. A lot of us, he holds a good place in all of our hearts. So I want to give best wishes to Coach Olson, who had a minor medical issue this week. But I know the type of person he is and he will be just fine. And lastly, I want to extend good luck. And that is to the Sunnyside High School Blue Devils Boys Soccer Team, who are taking their number, number ninth in the nation in number one ranking against some Phoenix team today. And I know they're going to bring home the hardware for the city of Tucson. So let's give best wishes to Sunnyside High School Soccer.
Anybody before Councilmember Fimbres? Councilmember Fimbres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During today's study session, an update on the 94th Tucson Rotary Parade was given to the mayor and council. The parade is the largest non-mechanized parade in the world and will take place tomorrow, Thursday, February 21st at 9:00 a.m. Hope to see everyone there at the 94th Annual Fiesta de los Vaqueros Parade, with this year's grand marshal being Guy Ashley. On Saturday, February 16th, I attended the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Center, a spray and neuter clinic that was held by Asefed Veterinary Charities. The animals brought there were also microchipped, vaccinated, and received leashes to help with their care. I want to thank Asefed volunteers for conducting this clinic and providing this for Ward Five residents. I want to also thank Jerry Nearly of the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Staff for being able to have this at their center. And Lupita Robles from Ward Five for her work to help make this happen. This marks the fourth annual year that I and my Ward Five staff have been able to work twelve free spray and neuter vaccination clinics for dogs and cats on the South Side. More than 1,500 dogs and cats have been sprayed, neutered, and vaccinated through the free clinics conducted. The next spray and neuter clinic will take place Saturday, March 23rd, at Mission Manor School. I want to thank Sunnyside's governing board and superintendent Steve Holmes for inviting me to take place and take part in their new solar site at Drexel Elementary, the fifth site of 24 to be constructed. This helps to save our environment and to use solar energy, saving taxpayers' dollars. Congratulations to Sunnyside on their newest solar site. February is marked for many occasions, one of which is love of reading. During the month, I and my staff have read at various schools in Ward Five and on the South Side, including Pueblo Gardens, Holiday, Len Yurquitas, and Gallego Primary. I want to thank the principals and teachers for letting us come to the school to read and the importance of reading in education and life. Al Rio Health invites everyone Thursday, March 7th, 4:00 p.m. to the official ground opening of their new Cherry Bell Health Center located at 1230 South Cherry Bell Stravenu and Ward Five. The new Al Rio Center at Cherry Bell is another part of the renaissance of the Ward Five and the South Side. The new facility adds 100 new healthcare physicians, as well as having primary care for children and adults, lab, radiology, including ultrasound and X-ray, behavioral health, pharmacy, dental, and health and wellness classes. And I look forward to working with them as the center opens and serves Ward Five and Tucson. On Saturday, March 2nd, at Evergreen Cemetery, 3014 North Oracle Road, the Gold Star Mothers Sculpture Dedication will take place. It is hosted by American Gold Star Mothers and American Patriot Memorial. Please join Sharon Jones, president of the American Gold Star Mothers Tucson Chapter, in association with American Patriot Memorial as they honor the mothers of all the heroes who have been lost while serving our nation. A bronze memorial statue will be placed at Evergreen Mortuary and Cemetery. Saturday, March 2nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:45 at the Evergreen Mortuary and Cemetery, 3015 North Oracle Road. All are invited. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to item four.
City manager's report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 41 dated February 20th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item five.
Liquor license applications report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 49 dated February 20th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, in this evening's liquor license agenda, item 5B, we have one request for person transfer. Under item 5C, we have one request for special event. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. However, item 5B1 does have a written argument filed in opposition, so that will be considered separately. An appropriate motion would be to forward item 5C1 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Have that motion, please.
Mayor, move to forward the liquor license to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Motion second on that matter. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That matter passes. What's the other one? 5B1?
5B1, it's Beverage Barn located in Ward One.
Ward One, okay. Do we have anybody here on that matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There is Yolanda Herrera that represents Sunnyside Neighborhood Association and SNAP. I would like to see if she is available to say a couple of words or, okay. So we'll take the applicant and if the applicant says, if you'd like to state your case.
Sure.
You could use the other.
Use the high mic.
My name's Pete Shellstrade. I represent the New Beverage Barn LLC. I'm here with the owner of the Beverage Barn, Basam Zida. He has completed Title IV Basic and Management Training Classes. He has all his employees also take basic training class. He's installed a scanner for IDs so that he can check all IDs properly. He's also painted the outside of the building within the last month. He's installed new lighting to make the parking lot brighter. He's cleaned up the landscaping and intends to keep it clean. He's moved here from Michigan, but he loves the city of Tucson and he wants to be a good neighbor. And he's here to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda, would you like to add your comments?
Yolanda, I'm not, I'm reading your letter and I'm not clear on your objection. So why don't you come up? Just, just all in it is you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the audience, city manager, city attorney, and members of the television audience. My name is Yolanda Rivera. I'm the current president of the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association and president of the South Side Neighborhood Association's Presidential Partnership, where our motto is to create positive change. And if you remember the words of the pastor just now, he said, "We need to make changes, whether they're difficult or not, and that's why we're here before you." As far as the objections, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, there were, we typically have not in the past objected to transfers, but in reading this application, to me, I saw a lot of red flags as far as the applicant being capable, qualified, or reliable, having no work experience. And at that time, he didn't have any training. There were questions on whether or not his staff was going to have training. Yes, I do say that he did clean it up, but for how long is it going to be cleaned up? There are concerns in the community that that location has been an issue since day one. It's relatively close, well, right across the street from Mission Manor Park, where we have a lot of our Little League players involved. And a lot of the parents have come to us with concerns about the homelessness, alcohol, being passed out and drinking at the park, or being passed out in front of people's yards, in front of their gates. This has been, like I said, a problematic location. I know that they have the A-frame. I don't know if the A-frame selling pizza is legal or not. At one time, they did have a patio in the front, which is now gone. I don't believe the applicant has never approached, either the old applicant or the new applicant, never approached the Neighborhood Association to see how they can work with us or to hear our concerns. Trash has always been a problem. Little whippets are a problem as they sell those as well, which it's a big issue for everybody in our community. Basically, again, we don't believe that the applicant is capable, qualified, or reliable, has no past history with liquor. I know that he may have gone through training. Any more training seems to be online. So you don't really get that personal experience of challenges and questions. I don't know if Jamal has anything that he would also like to add. I believe that Jamal also wrote a letter of protest.
Would you like to add your concerns?
I just see the one, but go ahead.
And for the record, Jamal?
Jamal Givens with Liberty Partnership Keno Neighborhoods Council. We've been a coalition within the South Side for 20 years. And upon looking at the application, my concerns are the challenges that we've had with that community. Our office actually is located on 6015, 6015 South Santa Clara, which is the old Mission Manor. So we're right next against the park. And we get to see the issues that occur because of alcohol and other drugs that are within that specific park. And from, how do I say this, on the down-low, people have told me that they've obtained liquor from that specific location, maybe minors or people being overserved. And so that's a concern that we have for our community and making sure that we have a good neighbor within our community to work with us, especially with that park being so close. So that's my concern.
Yeah, Yolanda, go ahead.
If I can just add one more issue, the drive-through has always been a problem as well. We don't know who's in the car when they're purchasing alcohol. We don't know if they're carding those individuals. They can say they are. And I'm concerned because people have made so many promises to us in the past. And the minute they get their license, everything's off the table. So this is a very emotional piece for us because we're trying our best to keep our community safe and clean.
Yeah, I mean, it strikes me that if you had a new applicant after you'd had a bad operator, that you might want to hear from that person. Mr. Applicant, why don't you come up? So the concerns that, please go up to that one.
This one?
No, that one, please. The concerns that were expressed by the neighborhood were that you don't have any background in running a liquor store. What's your background, sir?
Well, I do definitely agree with her with the words that she was saying. But she hasn't tried me yet. Since the day that I got there, everything was perfect. Everybody had been checked, carded, everything been clean. It's just from my background. That's how I like to deal with things. I like everything to be straight up. Correct, I'm a young man. I don't have that much of experience. But on the other side, we all got a chance to try. I haven't got my chance yet. I have been there month to month yet, right now. If she got anything wrong to say later on, she's more than welcome. I would love to help and be a good person around this neighborhood. I just got here. I moved all the way from Michigan to here. Not to do crazy things, not to be, not just to make money. That's not the point. I have a family. I have mom, dad, sisters that I support. I have bills to pay. So that's why I'm trying to make it to the better. So if you guys can help me out with that, or she can help me out with that, I'll be more than happy.
Okay, another concern was.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Do you live in the neighborhood?
I do. I'm down the street.
From the location?
Correct. I'm like, the apartments, what do you call it, Valencia Garden, I live there.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to meet with the neighbors and to go to the Neighborhood Association?
I haven't. I haven't, but I'll be more than happy to go. I'll be more than happy to go and join everybody out there because I've been so friendly with everybody. I'll be honest with you. I've been cussed because I haven't sold to people that are underage. Sorry to say that. Somebody spit at me at the drive-through just for me to ask him for his ID. And I was like, fine. You want to spit at me, keep driving, please. That's the best that I could do for you. And I tell all the employees, try your best. Do what you could do to do not serve or give anything to minors. And I just got here. Give me that chance.
Okay, there's a couple other objections. One was that you had not attended a liquor license training. Have you completed your liquor license training?
I have it. I have a Four Basic and a Four Management.
Okay. And something about a patio, I think Yolanda kind of referred to that. Are you running an outdoor operation at all?
That wasn't me. As soon I took over, like I said, as soon I took over, everything has been changed. From the minute that the painting, the lights, the cleaning, the garbage, all these things, the patio was one of it. Because it's covering the whole view of the store. So I don't want it, me myself, I don't want it there.
Okay. Mr. Rankin, these things tend to be on some kind of time clock. What's the story here?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you are correct. So this is your opportunity to act in terms of making your recommendation either for approval or denial. I also do need to point out that this is a person transfer application and not a new location. So the issues of location suitability of the location, those factors don't come into play. It is with respect to the capabilities, qualifications, and reliability of the applicant for the license to transfer into his name.
I mean, anyone can, Councilmember Durham?
Yolanda, I've got a couple of questions for you. You say, given the fact that the prior owner failed to maintain capability, qualifications, and reliability, we believe the new owner is less than qualified, capable, or reliable. But you're, the, you're claiming that the, and no doubt true, that the prior owner failed to do things right. How does that relate to the current owner?
When I wrote that, I want to remind you that he had not gone through the training, but he has no experience running a business at all. I mean, per the application, he was a mechanic and an Uber driver prior to, and then prior to that, he was unemployed. So we questioned his, how, if you're unemployed, how you were able to raise enough credit to take out a $120,000 loan. We understand that he only paid $10 for the liquor application itself, per the application.
And my second question is, you say, failure to ID and selling underage has been an issue with this location. Did that, was your concern with the prior owner there too?
Correct. And it's not, it wasn't just a one-time deal. It had to be, had to have occurred over and over again for the state to have pulled his license. Again, that, and I know that we can't talk about the location itself. It's being capable, qualified, or reliable. And I just don't believe he's got the skills or the experience.
So the things that the prior owner did wrong, failure to ID- So the things that the prior owner did wrong, failure to ID and selling underage, how does that relate to the current owner?
I don't know if they're related. I mean, I don't know if they're cousins, uncles, nieces, nephews. I don't know what the relationship with the past owner to the current owner.
Okay.
Mr. Seda, could you come back up for a second?
And per his application, he did not list that he lives in the neighborhood. It listed an area in Rancho Valencia. So if he changed that address, then that's recent, after his application was filed.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Mr. Mayor, before you.
Sure, go ahead.
I just have a question for our city attorney. Is lack of experience managing a liquor store, could it be used as unqualified because of where we have to go? We have to make sure that mayor and council feels comfortable with being able to say, we don't feel this particular applicant is qualified or capable to run a liquor store that has previously had issues. So would that be strong enough argument for the city to be able to defend a recommendation of denial?
So Councilmember Romero, the council can take, and the mayor and the council can take into consideration the applicant's past professional history, et cetera, in determining whether you believe he's capable and qualified to hold the license and move forward. But with that said, what I'll tell you is that typically, the things in capability, qualifications, and reliability that the board or ultimately a court would look at would be things like giving false information on the application, if there's any history of criminal violations or liquor law violations, those types of things.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Seda, I'm inclined to give you a chance, okay? But I do think it's important, I know you're new to the neighborhood, and I don't know what the others are going to do. I know you're new to the neighborhood and new to our community, but it is very important, particularly in the community that you're in, that you get to know your neighbors and you talk to them and take into account their sensitivities. And I can tell you that because you're across from the park, it's important to all of them that they'll be watching carefully. And so I don't know whether this will be granted or not, but in the event it is either here or at the state level, I would recommend to you that you involve yourself with the neighbors, which is the right thing to do anyway. So that's going to be my caution to you. I don't know if anybody else has anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to move this item.
Okay.
If I may. Because I feel that we don't have the appropriate defense to recommend a denial on behalf of the City of Tucson. I'd like to have a neutral recommendation, so that way, because of previous history and because of the lack of qualifications that have brought you up to this point, I'm going to recommend that the City of Tucson have a neutral recommendation.
Okay, anybody, first, I was a second to that.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any discussion on that?
I have a question about it. With that recommendation, it necessarily goes to the State Liquor Board? And during that interim, the applicant can meet with the residents and establish relationship or not, and based on this, based on that, those efforts, the people in opposition can choose either to say, yep, we're convinced that we were right the first time, or nope, we're convinced that this is a guy we want to support. They can use this interim period to work together.
Councilmember Kasachek. That's correct. If it moves forward with a no recommendation from the local governing body, then the state will set a hearing on it. We will not have a position that we're arguing in front of the board. Protesters would have an opportunity to express a protest at the state level, and then the board would make a decision.
And if it's a neutral recommendation, it still goes to the state board, correct?
Right, as a no recommendation from the local governing body.
It goes as a no recommendation?
That's how it's characterized.
Without a recommendation, not a negative recommendation.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not denial, it's not approval, it's no recommendation.
Right, and during that interim period, he will still be able to operate, correct?
If he's under the interim, he is, so yes.
There is, Mr. Mayor, City Council, there is.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, City Council, there is an interim permit in place, and so he is operating, has been operating for a month there, and so.
Okay.
He's got the interim permit, the answer's yes.
Yes.
And I'd also like to recommend, as Councilmember Kasachek mentioned, that, Mr. Seda, you meet with the neighborhood, make sure that there is contact before the license goes over to the state and that there is an agreement between the neighbors and your establishment as to how to keep it safe, not just for you and your employees, but for the neighbors and the people that use your establishment.
Correct. Will do.
Councilmember Durham?
Mr. Rankin, what is the impact of a no recommendation at the State Liquor Control Board?
The impact is just that there is an absence of a recommendation from the local governing body.
No, no, I think, was your question, what a no recommendation is for, oh, I keep messing that up. You mean a neutral recommendation.
I understand it to be a no recommendation.
No, no.
Okay. No recommendation in the sense that there is no recommendation. There is an absence of a recommendation.
So just so we're all clear, Councilmember Romero's motion is to send this to the state board with a neutral recommendation, not a yes, not a no, but a no position. And I guess this is the same question. What is the?
What is the impact on the State Liquor Control Board of a neutral recommendation?
It means that they'll schedule their proceeding, they'll hear from the applicant. If any qualified protester files their protest with the state, then they'll hear from them as well. But my office will not go up to make any arguments to the liquor board because we don't have a recommendation to argue for. So, and then the board will make its decision.
So maybe I should ask this question another way. Would it, how would it in fact, impact the likelihood of approval of this person-to-person transfer?
I don't know that I can answer that, how it impacts the likelihood of approval or not. It certainly makes it less likely for denial in the absence of a recommendation for denial.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to send this up to the state board with, I will call it a neutral or a no recommendation. Any other discussion on that? We have, yeah, we motion second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, you've got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item six.
Ask the audience.
Okay, at this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue. Please make sure you read the information on the back of the speaker's card for the presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual councilmembers may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask him to be placed on a future agenda or respond to criticism by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during Call the Audience. So tonight, we have, it looks like, four cards, which I'll call ordinary course cards, two on the same topic. The remainder of the cards are all on the same topic. I think they all express one position, as near as I can tell. There's a lot of them. So we won't, just for the record, there are 12 of those. We will not be able, I'm sure, to get through all of them in the time, but the record will reflect that there were 12 in that position, and we'll just take them in the order they came in. So I'm going to start with the, what I'll call the ordinary course cards, and then we'll move on to the border wall issue. So Robert Royce.
First, let me thank Rahina for plugging our Peace Fair and Music Festival on Saturday at Armory Park. I'm on the board. I will be there from 10 until 4 o'clock, signing people up to my mayoral petition. I'm going to skip my usual presentation and respond to Councilman Kasachek's mention of my name as, I'm proud of the fact that I'm the one person who has had the spine to stand up and speak out against all these giveaways that have hobbled our city. What is a giveaway? Well, let's look at Don Born. Approximately 12 or 13 years ago, he was given a $1 million appraised piece of property for $100 with the proviso that he was supposed to develop it immediately. He, I mean, the recession came and went, and there was no development. Finally, last year or towards the end of last, the year before, what is this, 2017, 2018, Reno Bravo agreed to give Don Born $8 million to develop the property. Now, as a thank you for the fact that he refused to stand by his obligations on that piece of property, you're going to give him seven years, no taxes. That means he's getting, the 19, the city and all of the taxing bodies of Pima County have been gypped. Out of 19 years of taxes, he was supposed, that property was supposed to go into tax rolls when it was developed and appraised. There was no G-ple at the time. Now that's a giveaway. Excuse me. Let's look at Scott Stitler. I was sitting right there when you came up with this, when a previous city manager came up with this scheme to sign a contract to give him $900,000 if they didn't come to terms in a year. And I'm sitting there, rolling my eyes. Why would he want to come to terms when he's going to get 900? So, you know, year came and went, and you standing right here, acting like a 13, in my opinion, acting like a 13-year-old brat, depending, demanding his $900,000. And I was sitting right there, watching the whole thing. Okay, you gave him his $900,000 in free parking, plus an extra $600,000 in giveaways, just for the heck of it, because he's a card-carrying oligarch in this city, and he deserves it. Now he's getting seven years of no taxes on the property, got $8 million to develop his hotel in CB, CDBG funds, which should have gone to weatherize houses in the city. He's getting 40%, am I right, 40% rebate on his sales taxes for four years collected in the facility? That's a giveaway. Excuse me. I'm a Jeffersonian. I believe that when you give stuff, give things away, it should be for everybody, not to individual people of privilege. I do not believe in buying people, bribing people to develop their own land and then absolving them of the taxes. I mean, it's ridiculous. Anyway, I think I've made my response. Thank you very much.
Yolanda Herrera?
Good evening again, so I won't do my whole introduction. Over. I just wanted to thank everybody who participated in the liquor license workshop that we held at the Ward Six office. And, Mr. Kasachek, thank you very much for the use of your facilities. I want to thank the city attorney for making sure that we had staff in attendance. We had a lot of good questions, a lot of good input. People want to see that workshop happen more often. What the public doesn't understand is it was not funded by the city. It was funded by SNAP and the LPKNC. So if people want to have more training, then I'm going to lay it back to you all to see if maybe we can work together to do another one. The other issue that came out was the fact that our addresses at the state level are not redacted. We worked with the city manager many, many years ago, over a decade ago, to make sure that protesters' addresses were redacted off protest. Because too often, and I'm going to say this on a personal level, I've been threatened many, many times, so it's, I would rather have that information redacted so I can live under the radar and feel like I'm at peace, even though I don't sleep at night, and I do sleep with my lights on, which would be nice if I could sleep in the dark. Not keeping in the dark, though. So if we can get somebody to help us with that at the state level to make sure that that gets redacted, the applicant's information always gets redacted, but they don't even live in our community 99.9% of the time. The other issue that I would like to bring up, we did a short little survey with our Sunnyside neighborhood members, and illegal dumping in our community seems to be a huge issue. I just spoke with Mr. De La Torre to see if he could give me hard numbers on one specific location. We've been working on this for over a year, trying to get this, the owner to somebody, the ward offices, environmental services, code enforcement, to get that individual to start gating it or blocking it so that we're not constantly going every other week with environmental services to clean it. Because ultimately, everyone in this room, everyone in the city is going to be paying for it. If it means citing him, then I'd like to see him citing it. If that's the only way he can move forward to do some proactive approach. The other owners on private prop, on lands that were Wildcat dumped on, they've worked with us, they've blocked it off. Problem solved. So with that, I thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Yolanda. Mr. Rankin, is it possible to redact objectors' addresses, or can we find out, or how do we work on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to look into it and let you know to what extent we can keep that information.
Yeah, if you can communicate with Yolanda, just so she can know and see what we can do. Okay, thank you. Mary Kelso?
Hi. First off, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor Rothschild, Ms. Romero, Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Fimbres, all the council members. Thank you so much for working with us and putting that out there today for the blue-collar workers. But I've got a little more information other than what Ms. Anna Yorike gave you, because she's talking about all of the City of Tucson employees. You know, the 40 different grades that she was talking about. The blue-collar workers, they're the lowest on the span, shall I say. And we're talking about what, like, eight, eight grades that we've got here. And in those grades, we've got a difference of, you know, like, $7 from the bottom to the top. And I've worked out some figures, and I haven't got them done because this is a lot of work. I don't have the computers that you guys have that I can just pull them all up. I have to work this all out. So, do you know we have a 52-year employee here, and he's still not at the top of his scale? 52 years, he's worked in the same job, and he's still $1.78 from the top of the scale. He should have been retired at the top of his scale at 30 years. So I don't understand how he couldn't have gotten there. And then we're looking at, you know, like you mentioned, we got the mail clerk, okay, at 11 something an hour. All these parks people, and I've brought this up for three and a half years, $13 an hour, $13.75 an hour for six-year employees. I've got 15-year employees here for $14, $13.82. I've got 15-year employees at $12.82, you know? This goes on and on. We've got people that have been in environmental services, okay? Because I'm going to talk about guys that are women that have been doing the same job, and the only way that they have done that job is to continually push and push and push. So somebody's been in that job for 13 years, and they don't want to promote, they don't want to go anywhere else, they just want to do their job. They started at 13 something an hour. They've been doing that job for 13 years. Because of the 2.5% and the 2% that we just got, and thank you all for that, I mean, they really needed this, but because of that, this person goes up to 14, I think it was 14.29 an hour. That's it, in 13 years. So we get a new employee in the same department, this happens to be in transportation, get a new employee, I'm sorry. Bottom line is, they had to train this new employee that's making the same amount. That's not fair. That's not fair. We have to look at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. John Schlecht?
Mayor, council. Who was here earlier also is welcome. We thank you for the dialect, for our chance to be looked at. We were shown and grouped in with the rest of the city. We just would like to ask that, we don't have 40 occupations in Ashme, we have nine, which most of ours are concentrated in five or six of the groups. TPDs was looked at separately, TFD was separate. We'd like you to separate ours, too, and look at ours individually. We have special needs, we have trades that have been here a long time. We were showed today the midpoint. That's the midpoint after all these, of being, all the years of working and being here. But again, just some more facts, $15 an hour, $31,000 a year, as pointed out by Councilwoman Romero. But again, the bottom line is, thank you for looking at it, ask for a little more objectivity to our needs, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So, the rest of these are on the same topic, but we'll get, I think, a pretty good representative sampling. So, I'm going to start with David Garcia. Is David Garcia here? Okay.
Thank you and good evening. My name is David Garcia. I live here in Tucson, a member of the Tahuana Autumn Nation, members of, and also mayor and council. I'm here as a former tribal leader for the Tahuana Autumn Nation, basically outlining opposed to this border wall that has been in discussion ever since this whole issue of the border, border wall that President Trump has passed his executive order. But I also want to also, in solidarity, ask the city council here to also, in solidarity, to take the same position that all of the border communities has taken, the position opposing the militarization of the southwest border, including even the governor initiating the National Guards to the southwest border. But also, as of recently, also standing in solidarity and supporting Nogales, Arizona, for opposing also what has been, has transpired within the past several weeks in regards to the whole southwest border with the barbed wire fencing along the international border. I know that the Tahuana Autumn Nation has passed their resolutions opposing the border wall, and I, as a member of Tahuana Autumn Nation, as a delegate for the American Indian Movement, has traveled three, three, three times to the United Nations, taking participation in the International Declaration on Indigenous Peoples. As a delegate for the American Indian Movement, even as a speaker opposing the border wall and also objecting to all of these issues that have transpired since probably 20 years or 25 years right now. But also, as a speaker with the permanent forum that's held every year at the United Nations on Indigenous issues have also taken the same position. So, I want to thank all of you, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Lakin Jordal?
Thank you so much, mayor and council, for allowing an opportunity to talk about this really important and timely issue. First off, I want to voice my complete, excuse me, I'm Lakin Jordal. I work with the Center for Biological Diversity. We've been fighting border walls and border militarization for about two decades now. First off, I want to voice my complete and total support for the solidarity resolution against the offensive and inhumane razor wire in Nogales, Arizona. Our border communities are not war zones, no matter how hard Trump and Border Patrol try to make them look like they are. Secondly, in a big part, I think, of why so many people are here tonight, I want to thank the City of Tucson. I want to thank you, mayor and council, for taking such a strong and clear stance against the border wall with the passage of a no-border-wall resolution last year. I'll add that that resolution passed unanimously, was a great showing of support and a great showing of solidarity with other communities across the borderlands. Tucson's now one of 36 cities, towns, counties, and tribal nations to have passed resolutions against the border wall, so we're in really good company. Many of these resolutions contain a commitment to divest from contractors that help design or build the border wall. Here in Tucson, we wanted our resolution to have teeth. We wanted it to be meaningful, more than just a statement. So, we voted unanimously to approve a resolution with those teeth. Now, I want to bring to your attention, bring your attention to a letter that a coalition of local groups sent to the mayor, council, and the city attorney. It should be on your desk in front of you. If not, hopefully, it's in your inbox. The intent of this letter is to formally alert the city that West Point Contractors, which is a business based in Tucson, is currently building border wall in El Paso under a $22 million contract. West Point, which is headquartered just a few blocks away from here, is profiting from border wall construction. They are profiting from building border walls through a community against the wishes of that community. The beautiful city of El Paso, like most border communities, also approved a no-border-wall resolution, and residents who live there are overwhelmingly opposed to the border wall. Brittany Miller, who hopefully will speak soon, is going to read a testimony from a resident of El Paso. I should note that West Point has won millions of dollars in contracts from the City of Tucson, the last of which was closed in 2017. We're here today to support the city in carrying out the commitment to divest from border wall contractors and refrain from doing business with West Point and all other border wall profiteers in the future. There are plenty of other principled contractors worthy of our taxpayer dollars who are not profiting from harming border communities and the environment. Border communities are stronger when we stand together, when we look out for each other. I thank the City of Tucson, I thank the mayor and council for the brave stance against the border wall. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Brother David Bure, I think it is?
It's an honor to be with you here this evening, and I, too, would like to speak to the, to the issue of the border wall. And that, and the people that are here, I think, are much more articulate than I am. So, my hope is only to read a recent statement from five days ago from the, the president of the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops, Cardinal Daniel DiNardo, and Bishop Joe Vasquez of Austin, Texas, who's the chairman of the United States Catholic Committee of Bishops on Migration. And this is their, God bless you. And this, and this is, this is the statement. "We are deeply concerned about the president's action to fund the construction of a wall along the U.S.-Mexico border, which circumvents the clear intent of Congress to limit funding of a wall. We oppose the use of these funds to further the construction of the wall. The wall first and foremost is a symbol of division and animosity between two friendly countries. We remain steadfast and resolute in the vision articulated by Pope Francis that at this time, we need to be building bridges and not walls. Thank you for your kind attention."
All right, thank you. Roger McManus?
Thank you, mayor, and members of the council. I'm Roger McManus, I'm chairman of the board, friends of the Sonoran Desert. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the council for its support of the City of Nogales, and also to note that, as we speak, additional concertina wires being erected in others, other Arizona communities and in between those communities. I want to briefly note that the problem here often is characterized as cost, of how much a wall will cost or to maintain, but that the costs are really much broader than that. And the most important cost associated with the current situation on our border is the fact that the government is operating fundamentally outside of the law. The people of Nogales and all the communities in between have no say whatsoever to major federal exercises that are impacting their communities, their economies, their private lands, the public lands that they support, the wildlife. All of these aspects of their day-to-day life are adversely impacted by the fact that the Department of Homeland Security has no inability to waive whatever laws that they wish to, to operate along the border. This is a fundamental assault on our democracy. And of all the costs that we have, all of which would argue against what's going on, this is the one that I think elected bodies such as yourselves, in the City of Nogales and throughout our country should be alarmed about the fact that we have fundamentally a paramilitary operation that has free wheel, will to do what they like to do without being accountable. I have worked professionally for many years on several continents and other countries. This is like it works in the Third World, where officials are not accountable and do whatever they like to do. So, I applaud your support of Nogales. I appreciate your past support for taking a harder look at the wall, and I hope you continue that stance. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Sergio Avila?
Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. My name is Sergio Avila. I'm a resident of Tucson, Arizona. I have lived here for 15 years, and I am here to thank you for your solidarity and resolution to the City of Nogales, but mostly for showing that leadership across the country, which allows some of us, residents of Tucson that travel across the country, to be proud of our community and the government that we have, not only at the city level, but also at the federal level. It's, it's great to be able to speak on these issues and yet look at people that we can look up for inspiration and aspiration, either as just citizens of this country or in the professional arena that we work on. So, in that regard, I usually can, can take 10 or 20 times what that will give me to talk about all the environmental impacts that border infrastructure have caused, are causing, and will cause in our environment. The importance of that is the health of our ecosystems, the health of plants and animals, and more importantly, the health and the sovereignty of native nations that have lived in these lands even before Mexico or the United States were countries or there were borders. So, I have to start by acknowledging that today we sit in historic Tahuana Autumn land, which we should be able to recognize, to know how long the struggle has been for some people along these so-called borderlands. The racial profiling, the separation of families, the banning of people from central, from certain countries or certain religions, the attacking of people from certain countries, the generalizations and stereotyping of people is occurring in this country today and needs to stop. As a new citizen of the United States, I can tell you how embarrassing it is to go to other countries and have to explain the racist and ill-conceived ideas that the current president has. It is embarrassment. And I know you join me on that. But I also have to speak as an immigrant, as a person who went through the immigration system, as a person who was a green card holder, and as a person who did not feel the confidence to stand here today because I was not a citizen of the United States to just raise my voice. So, I celebrate today, and I thank you for that right also. And I'm here to stand alongside you and stand with indigenous communities along the borderlands, along the whole United States and Mexico and United States and Canada borderlands to defend public lands and the access that we have to lands that belong to everybody. I'm not done. I can use that.
No, I'm just nodding.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Reverend Kenneth Brown?
Honorable mayor, city council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you. I speak in opposition to the wall that is proposed, and for the following reasons. I just returned from Telacapake, which is the southern part of Guadalajara. Worked there in a refuge for migrants for three weeks. These people come, in the scripture it says, "Blessed are you who are poor, for yours is the kingdom of God; blessed are you who hunger, now for you shall be satisfied." These are people who are extremely, extremely poor. I've been a missionary in Nicaragua for 16 years with my family. Nicaragua is the second poorest country in the continent behind Haiti. And believe me, these people are poorer than anybody I've ever seen in my whole life. They don't, they have their clothes on their back, some of them don't even have a backpack. They have just a little bag to tote their, just a little bit of food, and that's it. They come to the refuge there, El Migrante, El Refugio, and they receive food, they receive shelter for three days, which that, with that time, they can decide if they want to stay, maybe apply for asylum in Mexico, or come on to the U.S. and, and struggle at the border. I have been doing counseling with them. They have extreme trauma, psychological, physical trauma, from being harassed by gangs, threatened by MS-13, 18, excuse me, and women raped. Taxi driver that I was counseling said that he's extorted money every single week, $2,400 pesos, which is about $100 a week. If he does not pay, then his, his family is threatened with death. Friends, these people have run out of, run out of options. They don't have any more. They're, they're not the kind of people that we've heard criticized. These are human beings who are seeking a life free of threats of death, who seek to have a decent life in dignity, for their children, and a decent education. I urge you to continue in your efforts to oppose the, all the effort that has gone into building this wall. We need to welcome them and follow the 1967 Declaration of Human Rights of the, of the UN that claims that these people have the right to apply for political asylum in the U.S., as well as in Mexico. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have time for a couple more. We'll call on Dinah Bear?
Thank you. My name is Dinah Bear. I'm a resident of Tucson. In an earlier part of my life, I shared a environmental law exchange on behalf of the United States government with the Soviet Union, and I spent a lot of time in the Soviet Union and other communist countries. I never thought I would see a border here that looked like a border there. The concertina wire is repulsive, abhorrent to American values, in both a symbolic way and in a practical way, is a threat to human life and to animal life. And I strongly endorse the resolution and thank the city council for forwarding it. I also want to mention one thing that hasn't been mentioned by the previous speakers, and I endorse everything that's already been said, but another part of the so-called National Emergency Declaration allows the transfer of public lands from the Department of Interior and other public land managers to the military services. And I know this should be and is a concern to the City of Tucson, since a lot of people have moved here to enjoy the public lands and travel here on vacations to enjoy the public lands. So, just something else to worry about. But thank you very, very much for everything you've done against the border wall and militarization of the border. Really appreciate it and proud to be in Tucson.
Thank you, Dinah. You were brief enough. We can take two more still. Brittany Miller?
Ya atis, eh, Brittany, inishe. Hi, my name is Brittany, and I work with the Center for Biological Diversity as the Arizona Field Organizer. Again, I want to honor the land that we're on, it's Autumn land. And I'll be reading excerpts from an article written by Cynthia Pampa, who's the advocacy manager with the ACLU, and she lives in El Paso. So, I'm going to read part of this article because it highlights the ripple effect of our actions in other communities and the need for solidarity. So, okay. So, "When the Tucson City Council unanimously voted to oppose the border wall, it promised Tucsonans that the city would take a stand against President Donald Trump's ongoing fear-mongering campaign. West Point Contractors, a Tucson-based company, is currently constructing a brand-new 18-foot, 22-million, four-mile wall through some of my bi-national communities..." 22 million, four-mile wall through some of my bi-national communities, oldest neighborhoods. The wall is planned to cut through the Chihuahua historic district, the neighborhood on the National Trust for Historic Preservation's Most Endangered Historic Places list, a community that represents El Paso's history as one of the largest, safest cross-border cities in the U.S. West Point's bulldozers and heavy equipment already rumble through our neighborhoods, ready to rip it apart in the name of false security and empty protections. My neighbors and I in El Paso urge the city of Tucson to continue honoring their promise to divest from companies like West Point Contractors. We cannot afford to give a pass to companies that are profiting from the destruction and militarization of our communities. And that's from Cynthia. And just the borderlands have been in the hands of greed for far too long and it's time to end that. So I support the resolution of solidarity with Nogales and I support the city of Tucson in keeping their divestment commitment. Ahiehe, thank you.
Okay, we got, thank you. We have time for one more. Moi Hedin Abdallah Aziz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Muhyiddin Abdallah Aziz, and I immigrated to this wonderful city about 40 years ago. And I have, so it's been home for 40 years, and what a wonderful home it is. Thanks to everyone who helped make that possible. However, my home, our home, our community, is now threatened, threatened by our government's policies of border militarization and immigration policies. Just yesterday, one of our communities, Jesus Reyes, was taken to or went to immigration court as his case, that was an old case, was inexplicably reopened. And this is happening everywhere. While you were discussing the liquor license, I was heartened, I was delighted that your only and main focus was on our community and on our neighborhood. This is the same case, okay? A couple of years ago, I stood here and I advocated for Tucson becoming an immigrant welcoming city. You did the right thing then, okay? However, the intent and the, 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 of the intent of that, of that great decision hasn't been fulfilled. Today, we have another initiative in this town to make this city a sanctuary city, okay? I hope that you will actively support this initiative as it is one way to protect our community. I also, a couple of years ago, we urged you to end contract with G4S, okay, because of its human rights violation. Today, we have another company that is here in our, from our community, doing exactly the same thing, doing great damage, not only to our borderlands, but also to humanity as a whole. I urge you, like you did a few years ago, to again stand up on the side of justice and do the right thing and stand against this wall. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to Item 7.
Consent agenda items A through J.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on the senior consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is city vehicles, annual approval of exemption of certain city vehicles from bearing identifying markings. Item C is an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Arizona for compost services. Item D is employee benefits, adoption of fiscal year 2020, Tucson supplemental retirement system employer and employee contribution rates. Item E has been continued at the request of staff. Item F is a final plat S-18088, Timrod Minor Subdivision, lots 1 through 2. Item G is a final plat S-18090, Count of Montavista, lots 1 through 22, commoners A, B, and C. Item H is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with the Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County for the pedestrian hawk crossings, fiscal year 17 project. Item I is real property authorization to acquire real property for the Houghton Road Corridor Improvement Project. Item J is Tucson co-dementing Chapter 8, establishing a full-time magistrate pro-temporal position and changing the payment method for senior special magistrates. That's the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve that agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve the matters on the consent agenda.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that matter? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Just for clarification, that would be excluding item E that was continued.
Correct.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachi?
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye. Items on consent agenda approved by a vote of 6-0. Let's go to item 8.
Mr. Mayor, is there a possibility of asking to move item 12 forward? There are still people waiting to hear on item 12, which is the resolution. So if you have the opportunity.
There's always the possibility of asking. I'll take a look around. It's probably, yeah, we'll, we'll go there. All right, let me move over there. Item 12, if you could call it.
Resolution supporting Nogales City Council's resolution requesting removal of the concertina wire along the U.S. border within the city of Nogales and update on resolution 22763. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 58, dated February 20, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution 22992 by number and title only.
Resolution number 22992 relating to public health and safety, declaring mayor and council's support of City of Nogales resolution R-2019-02-001 and declaring an emergency.
What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Romero?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I realize that mayor and council have had this conversation before, but mayor and council, following in the, in the steps of the Tojono'otam Nation, which the Tojono'otam Nation passed their no-border-wall resolution back in February of 2007, Pima County and the city of Tucson passed their resolution in June of 2017, and clearly it stated our opposition to the militarization and the continued build-out of a border wall. In it as well, we had a divestment piece that was very specific to, and let me read it to you. Where is it? The mayor and council intend to require the disclosure by companies of their involvement with the border wall prior to city investment in those companies. The city of Tucson does not wish to be associated with any company that participates in design, construction, or financing of the border wall in any way. And one of the pieces of the conversation today was to get an update from our city attorney as to where we are. I know that there is a question about West Point being a Tucson company but building the border wall in El Paso. And so I just wanted to make sure that we've started the conversation today by getting an update of where the city of Tucson is in that divestment piece.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once you pass the resolution giving the direction that councilmember Romero just read, city manager's office put our investment advisors on alert with respect to any city investments in companies that are identified as participating in the design, construction of the border wall. The city manager's office has, in connection with the scheduling of this item, checked to make sure that we have honored that commitment and that no investments have been made since that time and the companies identified on the list. And the manager's office can confirm for you tonight that it remains true that we have not invested in any of those firms. With respect to West Point Contractors in particular, you forwarded the letter that had been provided and was referenced here tonight, and the manager's office, research has shown that the city has not been engaged in any business with West Point Contractors since the time of the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you for the update.
Okay, then we do have a resolution in front of us, which has been agendaized.
And I also wanted to, I wanted to pay recognition that councilmember Kazachi, Vice Mayor Finbres, and I requested immediately, as, as quickly as we possibly could, put a resolution in support of the city of Nogales. I just wanted to let you all know that I did have a conversation with Mayor Garino. He knows that the city mayor and council is, has this resolution and solidarity with the city of Nogales in front of us. He sends his appreciation and really asked me to let you all know that they are frankly offended as a community for, for having this and other militarization efforts in their community. As we all know, Nogales is, is one city, even though there's a border that runs through the middle of it. Nogales is one city. It's a healthy, safe community, and there is no emergency on our border. There is no emergency. The city of Nogales is one of the safest, culturally diverse and rich cities 40, 40 minutes from us. They are our sister city, and to be frank, the raising of the razor wire on the city of Nogales is repulsive and abhorrent, and we should not stand for an affront to our communities as is happening right now. The city of Tucson has a long history of progressive politics. It has a long history of, of standing in solidarity with refugees and immigrants in our community. We were the first city in Arizona back in 2010 to stand, take a stand against SB 1070. We've passed our Dream Act resolution, a resolution with the Arizona Accord, an immigrant welcoming resolution, an immigration reform resolution. We changed our TPD's general orders to make sure that we protected minors and victims and witnesses of crime, amongst other things. We passed a memorial asking for deportations of families to stop and supporting migrant use. I mean, we, we have a whole list, and this is just in immigrant and refugee rights. And we need to stand in solidarity with the city of Nogales. I just wanted to add one particular point that is really piercing in the resolution in Nogales. And it says, "Whereas placing coiled concertina wire strands on the ground is typically only found in war, battlefield, or prison settings, and not in an urban setting such as downtown Nogales, Arizona. And placing coiled concertina wire that is designed to inflict serious bodily injury or death in immediate proximity to our residents, children, pets, law enforcement, and first responders is not only irresponsible but inhuman." So I'd like to make a motion and then open it up for continued discussion that we pass and adopt resolution 22992.
Okay, we got a second, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Steve? Is that a yes, sir?
Yeah. So I want to thank the speakers and also Richard Marahina for joining in the memo in support of the Nogales mayor and council. We would also like to see the Board of Supervisors and surrounding jurisdictions join us in that. So it's not just the city of Tucson, but it's a regional, regional expression of repulsion over hanging razor wire on a, on a fence along commercial and residential corridor with our neighbors. But I also want to piggyback on what Reverend Brown was saying. Today, we received another 125-ish guests at the Benedictine Monastery. This is a, if the president wants to talk about a national emergency, we have a humanitarian emergency that we as a community, not as a city government, but as a community, are addressing every single day at 800 North Country Club here in this city. This began about four years ago at the Greyhound Bus Depot. There used to be a double-wide trailer just behind us. Credit to the Greyhound management, they allowed us to, and by us, I mean volunteers from the community, it was at that time Project Mariposa, to receive the families that ICE would drop off. Understand, as you correctly pointed out, these are not people out traveling on a bus trip. These are people who have traveled by foot across Mexico from Central America, largely Guatemala. It speaks volumes to know that they have felt safest in the hands of traffickers to get here. We had received about 57 people at the Benedictine a week ago. Three, there were three intact families, so most of these people are a mom and a couple of kids, or a dad and a couple of kids. Unaccompanied minors, I would tell you, are still being taken to Southwest Key. So what we're seeing are people who have traveled across Mexico by foot. You look at their shoes when they arrive at, at the monastery and you will see either no shoelaces because they've been taken by ICE, or they're the, those aluminum foil blankets torn in strips so that they can just keep their shoes on. The stories that we're hearing are exactly what you portrayed. They are the mom whose son had his arms cut off at the elbows because he wouldn't join a gang in Guatemala. They are people who are raped, robbed, under the care of coyotes crossing Mexico, and they are in this community legally. They were, they have been processed by ICE. They are here pending deportation or asylum hearings somewhere else. These are not necessarily Spanish-speaking people. We have at the monastery now nine indigenous languages that have been translated so that the volunteers can simply communicate with the people who are showing up there. When I was there on Sunday, ICE pulled up and dropped in one of their little nine-passenger vans and 12 people piled out of the back of it, a few kids, a couple moms, a couple dads. And when they enter the monastery, they are greeted by volunteers saying, "You are welcome here. This is your home. This is, our house is your house." Of course, in Spanish, and there are people in the council who can do that better than me. They are greeted, given a medical assessment by volunteers from the U of A Medical School. They are fed, given residence. So, so the point of all this is, is to say, yes, Reverend Brown, we are hearing those stories in this community. And if, you know, we can pass resolutions all, all month long, but if you want to touch the lives of some people who absolutely need your assistance, they need, as you said, they need backpacks, they need, these are, they need shoes, blankets, don't, you know, they need food. We need food at the monastery. Don't, don't come down with a, with a bunch of cooked spaghetti, but bring the dry stuff and, you know, canned food so that, so that, and by the way, it's the migrants who are stepping up and doing the cooking in the kitchen. They're not here simply to be, to be coddled and pressed through, they want to participate in this process. So would invite you, and we'd invite you, and I'm sure the other council offices will, will, will accept it. My office is two blocks from the monastery. Bring your stuff by, we'll transport it over there. It was very disruptive when The Star ran an article in the Sunday paper that said, "Take your stuff over there." your stuff over there." Because of the vulnerable nature of the population who's showing up there, it is, the, the volunteers are given background checks by Catholic Community Services. They don't want people just wandering in. So I would invite you to bring your donations to our office, and if other council offices want to open that up, Office Ward Five, I hear as well, then do that. But there is a, there is a real-life opportunity for you to participate in, in the well-being of these, these families here in this city right now.
Okay, Councilmember Durham.
This resolution before us tonight is a, an excellent example of standing up to the Trump administration's attempt to use wartime iron curtain tactics along our border with Mexico.
Okay, anybody else? If, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item eight.
Zoning SE 17172 T-Mobile Drexel Road R2 Zone Wireless Communication Facility Special Exception Land Use Ordinance Adoption. Item was continued from the meeting of September 5th, 2018. Report from City Manager. Report from Zoning Examiner.
City Manager's Communication Number 48, dated February 20, is received and made part of the record. This is a special exception land use request for property located near Drexel Road and Nogales Highway, just west of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. Staff recommends approval of the wireless communications tower application. The zoning examiner recommends approval of the special exception subject to the recommended conditions. Is the applicant or representative present? Come on up, please. Could you state your name, sir, and who you represent?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Reg Destry. I work with SBA Communications. I apologize, I've got a bit of a cold right now, so I will try and keep my speaking to a minimum.
You don't have to say much, hopefully. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements as set forth by the zoning examiner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do not object to the requirements.
Okay. Mr. Ms., Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11623 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11623 relating to zoning, a special exception land use wireless communication facility, SE 172, 17172 T-Mobile Drexel Road, located approximately 200 feet north of Drexel Road and 100 feet east of Nogales Highway, approving with conditions the construction of a wireless communication tower, monopole with nine antenna panels, 80 feet in overall height, including top-mounted lightning, lightning rod, within an approximately 2,400-square-foot lease area in the southwestern portion of a 26.62-acre parcel that extends approximately one mile from Drexel Road on the south to Irvington Road on the north in the R2 zone and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve it. The request is recommended by the zoning examiner with SBA Towers, executed waiver of claims and passing it up, Ordinance 11623.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this matter?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm a T-Mobile customer. I actually work in the area. I have a considerable number of drop calls in that area, so I'm very glad this is going up.
I'm glad we could make one constituent happy tonight.
Absolutely.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Maybe Mr. Councilmember Cunningham should recuse himself because of interest.
Mr. Rankin, is it okay for Mr. Cunningham to vote? Okay.
Mr. Phimbres.
Yes.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachek.
Aye.
Mrs. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Ordinance 11623 passes by a vote of seven to zero. Let's go to item nine. Thank you.
Tucson Code amending Chapter 23A relating to the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Subsidy Program. Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11624.
City Manager's Communication Number 52, dated February 20, is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11624 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11624 relating to development impact fees, amending Tucson Code, Chapter 23A Development Compliance Code, Article 3 Development Impact Fee Regulations, Division 2 Fee Calculations, Section 23A-81E Waivers and Setting an Effective Date.
What's the council's pleasure? Anybody?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I have questions.
Sure.
Before I, I make any motions.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the Housing Community Development Department putting this item together. I understand how important impact fee waivers are for the affordability of housing in our city. I think we've done a good job at the city of Tucson to apply for and help as many nonprofit and for-profit developers build affordability. And so it's important that we continue. I'm glad that we're defining the program on how to use the impact fee waivers. But I do have questions. I just wanted to see, your proposed amendment would address a couple of concerns. One of them, and the first one is that only certified nonprofit affordable housing providers would, would, that meet the federal affordability threshold of 80% of the area median income would be able to apply. Can you explain a little bit more about that? Because I want to know what 80% area median income means in terms of dollars per year, and why wouldn't we put it up to 120% of, of area median income?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Romero, the actual amount for a family of four would be about $48,000 would be the income limit. The reason we chose that is, it's consistent with HUD's guideline for affordable housing. So it's not that we arbitrarily chose a number. It's consistent with what HUD uses for public housing, Section 8, and the other programs that we administer as well.
80% of area median income is $48,000, you said?
Roughly for a family of four, yes.
Okay. What, what is that area median income at 120%?
Um.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Honorable Mayor, members of council. Ma'am, it would be somewhere in the area of about $70,000-ish.
Okay. I'm just thinking of a household of, of two teachers, which, I don't know, as a, starting out, 45,000 apiece. Alrighty. Has this been discussed, the, the percentage, the area median income?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman, uh, Member Romero, do you mean by, with the development community or just in general?
With the stakeholders and in, within your office.
We did meet with stakeholders. We weren't able, I know, you know, the last time we were here at the study session, we were instructed to meet as a, kind of hold a stakeholder meeting for the entire group. It was a little difficult to get everybody together, so we did try to meet with as many of our nonprofit developers individually as possible. We were able to meet with a good number of them, I think was fair representation of other developers that utilized the impact fee subsidy. So we did have the conversation about what would work for them. This is consistent, a lot of them use the tax credit programs, which 80% of AMI is consistent with the tax credit programs as well.
Okay. And how about the second point that you have, that it, it won't exceed the percentage of non-public investment into the proposed projects? Can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, members of council, the idea behind that is simply to encourage private investment. So, for example, there are developers, and I don't say this negatively, I don't want you to think that we're against any kind of development, but there are developers that come and their entire project is entirely funded by public dollars, where they're receiving federal tax credits, they're also receiving Section 8 project-based, so the developer themselves has very little stake in the actual development of the project. Our goal with the, with the subsidy is to encourage more private investment, so those who would invest more private dollars, whether it be through mortgages or their own dollars, would actually receive a higher portion of their impact fees subsidized. Example, if a project was $100, and the developer came and they said, "You know what? I'm going to put $1 into this project of my own money, and the rest of it's going to come from federal and state and city sources," then we would essentially subsidize 1% of their impact fees.
What, what's the thought behind that?
Again, just to encourage more private investment in the project, and to ensure that the public investment is, one, maintained and monitored, but also to ensure that we're utilizing it the best possible way.
Um, the argument with that has been, and I've heard, that the, the more expensive the project, the more expensive the house or the apartment, you know? And so that actually discourages affordability or affordable housing from happening. And so have you, have you thought about that? For example, with the Pima County Housing Land, uh, Land Trust. What they say is that if, if we have to pay for land and have to pay for impact fees and have to pay for so many other things, as an affordable housing nonprofit, it's really, it's really hard to, to make it pencil. And so, and so that, that's why it's hard to build affordability, especially ownership. And so have you thought about the consequences of that particular rule?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Romero, uh, yes, I don't, definitely we've considered it. I think one of the caveats in the proposed program is in Section 6, which allows the council at their own discretion to authorize higher amounts for projects, maybe say for Habitat for Humanity, for Pima County Community Land Trust, where we feel that their model is for affordable homeownership, or for their, their model is something that we want to encourage more of in our community, then certainly the council would have, under Section 6 of the proposed amend, uh, proposed program, the opportunity to offer 100% of, or a higher percentage, whatever was at the council's choice, well, you would be able to, you know, authorize a higher amount if you saw fit.
Um, I don't know if we could do that at the table. I think that it's much better if there is a well-thought-out percentages, depending on the nonprofit and its track record in terms of building affordability. You're not expecting us to approve this ordinance, are you, today? Or were you expecting yes?
Yes, I think they are.
Okay.
So, so let me, let me try to answer Councilmember Romero's questions as best I can. One is I understood the rationale between the private versus public fraction, I guess I'll call it, is that public dollars, what, I think what we're, this is a public benefit we're giving, in other words, we're taking our impact fees, just like you were talking about this afternoon, would otherwise, and it does have to be paid for by the general fund otherwise, and we're saying, when you're already getting the public dollars, what we want to do is, is benefit what additional dollars you put in. And so that's number one. Number two, the way this was written, and I remember distinctly at the, at the table, we put in there is, we want, this will be the general outline, but we want even at that, for every proposal where there's going to be a waiver, to come to us, just like the G-Plaid. And in many cases, it'll probably be just like the G-Plaid, fairly ordinary, but it will give us that opportunity. I think it was Councilmember Cunningham who wanted to assure and keep an eye on, you know, how much of this are we doing each year because we do have to pay that money back? I think that was, that was my recollection of it, anyway.
I, I understand, but it, it concerns me to have as much leeway. I'd like for the, this program, as we, as we approve it, I would really like to see a little bit better defined, especially this portion, because organizations like Habitat for Humanity, or La Frontera, or Pima County Public Community Land Trust, they're not a for-profit organization. They don't have money laying around and, 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 you know, and paying themselves the high salaries. And so it concerns me if we wouldn't, if we don't have a sliding scale, or something a little bit more specific to what you're trying to explain here, it just concerns me that, that some of these organizations are not going to be able to pencil out their projects. And some of these smaller-scale organizations that can do infill projects, that can do six, seven houses of build-out are valuable, are valuable to our community. So I would like a little bit more definition in how you plan to do this. I would hate to bring something to the table at the mayor and council off, at the meeting, and say, "Well, you know, it's Habitat, so we should give them 100% or 80% or 75%." I, I wouldn't be able to have that information to be able to make a, you know, you, the professionals are the ones that should be defining this a little bit more, because some of these organizations don't have enough to be able to, to prove that they, as an organization, could put half of the money into, into the project.
Mr. Gregory, my understanding is that you met with everybody who has made applications in the past to us, not together, but individually. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Okay, and that the only one that expressed a reservation was Habitat, because they do have a little bit of a different model. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is.
And how is it that you intend to deal with Habitat?
So we actually wanted, I apologize, Honorable Mayor, members of council, we wanted to actually meet with Habitat at the beginning of their calendar year, fiscal year, and, and work with them on their entire annual plan, so that we were able to basically approach this at one time, as opposed to having to come back every single time they need to do a project. It would be ideal for us, and I think for them as well, and this is a conversation we have had with, with T. Van Hook, who is the executive director of Habitat, to have them come and, at one time, and say, "These are the projects we intend to do," and work with them at that time to identify how we can help them with the impact fee waiver, and also how we can help them with any application fees or any other funds that we have available. We have home funds that we can help them with. We do have other resources that we can utilize to help fund the impact fees for a lot of the developers who may have challenges otherwise paying for them.
So we're just looking at Habitat and no other nonprofit developers?
All the other nonprofit developers, I think, approved this plan, and after working it through three, three or four times, Habitat did have concerns, and their, their concerns were, they do, they do have a different model, and their model is that they do do individual homes, and they, their, T.'s real concern was, "Look, you have a," she actually wanted a shorter affordability covenant, and I think the rest of us like the longer affordability covenant, but her concern was that we have people that, under our model, will come a point where they're actually, can sell their home, and they want to sell it, but the affordability covenant precludes them from doing that. And so I think we can come up, I think as, as Mr. Gregory's indicating, we can come up with a plan each year where we sit with them and figure out exactly what that model will look like. I would personally not want to go forward, not, not want to go forward tonight with this, with the understanding really twofold, and, and I underline it, number six, "All requests for impact fee incentives are subject to City of Tucson Mayor and Council approval and be subject to any and all conditions placed upon the project by the mayor and council." So I think that's our safeguard, number one. And then number two, I appreciate Habitat's concerns, but I do think we can work with this general outline to get them where they need to be. Anyway.
Well, and, and for me, it's, if, if I may finish.
Yeah.
For me, I'm thinking more than just Habitat for Humanity, I'm, I'm thinking trust fund, I'm thinking other, other nonprofit developers that might not be originally from here, that we haven't been able to touch base with. So if we can change things around, I like the idea of putting some, some meat on this bone, on these bones, right? I like the idea that you've already done all of this work, but I just want to make sure that we can change thing, change the program around if it, and adjust it.
Sure.
And if it's not working out, be able to bring it. That, that would be the only way that I, that I, that I would vote for this today. One more question that I have is, has there, has there been any discussion about ownership versus rental? Because as I said earlier, the city of Tucson, we've done really well with rental, affordable rental, multi-family type housing. I don't think we have done as great with homeownership affordability and, and that long-term affordability, which goes back to the affordability and, and that long-term affordability, which goes back to the maintaining the projects affordable for 15 years. There have been liens for 20 years on other, like, I think Pima County does a 20-year affordability lien when Pima County funds are used. Is there a particular reason why 15 and not 20, like other?
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Romero, our, actually, our original number was actually only 10 years, and that was originally to satisfy some of the other developers. We actually looked at that and actually increased it to 15. A number of the developers, probably 90% of the developments that are done, that utilize this program, also utilize federal tax credits, which actually come with the 20-year affordability. So for most of the projects, 20 years would end up being the de facto kind of minimum, anyway. We want to encourage homeownership, also. I think that's, ultimately, I think that's our job, right, is to, to help people become homeowners. So, you know, in those scenarios, we have developers who are bringing forward those, again, the mayor and council can potentially offer a higher amount, but also, I think, you know, we can work with them as well to help them utilize all of the resources available that we have at our disposal.
I guess I'd like to know, because it doesn't have to be written down tonight, right, but I'd like to know, where do we want to focus our funds? You know, where is it that we want to focus the impact fee waivers in the future? I think we've done absolutely amazing when it comes to affordable rental. I don't think we have a good track record, especially with conversations happening in the community. Lots of people are concerned that the diversity of people coming into particular areas of, especially in downtown neighborhoods, that it's very unaffordable now, that people can't own homes in Barrio Santa Rosa, or Barrio Cogur Lane, or Dunbar Spring. And so that homeownership is something that I think we need to focus on. So was there a conversation about how to use this impact fee waivers, like 50% affordable homeownership, or 50% rental? Was there any conversation about that, whether with the stakeholders or internally?
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, just a general conversation, I don't want to, you know, I can't really say that we had a very in-depth conversation about that particular topic. What I can say, though, the way the program is designed, this isn't, we're actually, this isn't the ordinance as much as it is an actual program, so...
Okay.
Oh.
Go. Yeah, no, no, continue. I'm agreeing with you.
No, no. So we can change this at any time, really. If it suits us to change it in six months, then we can bring it back and make those, make those changes annually, or every six months we can review. So whatever is the mayor and council's pleasure as far as review of the program, we can absolutely bring it back and readjust the program so that it suits what we want to see more of in our community.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I had one question.
Councilman Fimbres.
Can the mayor and council be reminded about federal, state, and local subsidy layering reviews and what they entail?
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Vice Mayor Fimbres. So the subsidy layering review is essentially a process by which we determine, whether it be us or the federal government, determines that a project has the appropriate amount of public funding. So that process determines, it takes a look at all of the resources that are being brought into a project, whether it be private mortgages, public mortgages, tax credits, the rent amounts, and determines whether or not a project is under or oversubsidized, ideally trying to ensure that, one, the project is absolutely viable and will survive for the long term, but, two, to make sure that we are not providing too much public subsidy into any individual project.
Anything else? Councilman Durham?
Mr. Mayor, I very much support the Habitat in all the work they do, especially at Minton Court, which is in Ward III. And I think that's a terrific project. Mr. Mayor, is it your opinion that the number six which you read will allow us to accommodate Habitat and make sure that they continue to do their work they do?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was what collectively as a council we decided before. But I also do think that the offer, I guess I'll call it tonight, by Mr. Gregory to reach out to them and, and say, look, because your model is different, we need to sit down with you in advance and work out an annual plan. I think we'll take care of that. Councilman Cunningham, anything, or no? Okay. All right, we still waiting for, okay, Steve?
So I think you guys have done a good job on this, putting this together. The outreach was substantial, and I appreciate your willingness to sit down with Habitat because of their unique model. And I think that they will appreciate being able to put together an annual plan, and it'll benefit everybody. This, we also received some input from the multi-housing association that I shared with you, and that is their concern that this only relates to nonprofits. What's your sense as to extending these same, these same conditions to the for, to for-profit entities as well, as long as they meet the other criteria, the 80% and all that?
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Kazachik, my opinion, I think, as I stated to you previously, we don't really have a problem. I think the goal is to create affordable housing. And I think ultimately, the end of the day, is what we want to do. I know, I think it's our preference to help nonprofits, but at the end of the day, I think the ultimate goal is more affordable housing. So I don't think departmentally, you know, we have any preference one way or the other. I think that's more of a council decision.
Okay. I don't know, how's the council feel about it? I wouldn't, the concern was that we're, if by limiting it to nonprofits, we may be limiting the market, and I wouldn't want to do anything that limits the market for affordable housing, as long as we're trying to incentivize it.
So, Councilman Cunningham?
Your Honor, I think it's really, we have to be really careful when we try to give away impact fees on a low-income project, or on affordable home project. We have to be really careful, because now what we're doing is, we're subsidizing the general fund, and we're compromising the ability to develop neighborhood advancement items in that area. So it's a double-edged sword. We have to be really careful. I was ready to vote on this tonight. I'm actually really happy with how it's presented. I think that the, I personally think that the, the dialogue with any of the nonprofits, including Habitat for Humanity, but there's three or four others that do pretty much the same stuff. They can all be on an annual, can be handled at the policy level. But I was ready to move this tonight. If it's not pressing, we can wait, but I can move the item.
Move it.
I move that we pass and adopt 11624.
You got a second? We got a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, can I add to the, to that motion? Can we have like a, I don't want to call it sunset, but an annual report for possible adjustment to the program?
That amendment's acceptable.
Okay, sure. Look at this on an, at an annual review. Sure. Okay, you accept a second? Okay, got a motion, second with an amendment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Gregory. All right, let's move on to item 10.
Economic Development Notice of Intent to Enter Into a Retail Development Tax Incentive Agreement with Main Gate Partners. Report from city manager, resolution number 22990.
City manager's communication number 47, dated February 20, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution 22990 by number and title only.
Resolution number 22990 relating to economic development, adopting a notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with Main Gate Partners LLC, and adopting an independent economic analysis relating to the agreement.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, the project is going to generate just under $7 million to the taxpayers, and the value of the incentive is about half of that. So I'd move that we approve resolution 22990.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Mrs. Scott.
Aye.
Resolution 22990 passes by a vote of seven zero. Item 11.
City magistrate's appointment of full-time magistrate pro tempore and fixing compensation. Report from city manager, ordinance number 11627.
City manager's communication number 57, dated February 20, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read ordinance 11627 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11627 relating to city court, pursuant to Tucson Code, Section 8-2.2, and the recommendation of presiding Judge Kyle Bryson of the Pima County Superior Court, appointing special city magistrate Thaddeus Semen as full-time magistrate pro tempore of the Tucson City Court, fixing compensation and declaring an emergency.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve ordinance 11627, naming Thaddeus Semen as the magistrate pro tem.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Congratulations, Judge, aye.
Ordinance 11627 passes by a vote of seven zero. We did item 12, we'll go to item 13.
Adjournment?
Council stand adjourned. Next meeting, March 5, 5:30 p.m.